And call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with holy and just as a whole.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arns.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weeblehouse.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Claussen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Your Honor, declare a con ballot for item 10.
Okay, motion is second. If no discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Granquist, Arns, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Claussen, and Hildebrand. Abstaining from the vote, Weeblehouse. Motion carries.
Okay, I would look for a motion now for approval of the full agenda with one slight change. We've had a request to move item number 25, the proclamation of Arbor Day, back to the end of the agenda, given the receivers of that proclamation will not be able to attend until later tonight. So we'd look for a motion with that change.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. No discussion. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number 24 on your council agenda under special presentations, a proclamation for April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. I will read the proclamation, whereas April 11th, 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, national origin, sex, familial status, and handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas the Norfolk Housing Agency and the Norfolk Housing Development Division of the City of Norfolk are committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. With that, is there anyone here this evening to receive the proclamation? It looks like Gary Brett Schneider, our Norfolk Housing Agency Director. Okay, moving into the public hearings and related action section of the council agenda. Item number 26, I will open this hearing to discuss revision of the 2020-2021 One-Year Plan for Street Improvements. And to kick off this discussion, Steve Ramis, our City Public Works Director. Steve.
Mayor and council, what you have before you here is a need to revise our one-year plan specifically due to some additional general revenue that's been freed up as a function of CARES Act funding for some additional street improvements around the community. Specifically, we've gone ahead and added all of the projects that you're going to see and hear me talk about to that plan. There are two specifically that are requiring us to add to the plan. One of those is North First Street, north of Benjamin Avenue, between Benjamin Avenue and roughly the flood control levee. That section has been distressed for a few years now, and needing to get in there and do some overlay work on that, we're going to have to take the asphalt completely off and do some subgrade stabilization in that area. So that does require us, it moves us from a maintenance mode of improvement into what we call a 3R mode of improvement that requires, again, the revision to our one-year plan. The other project would be a concrete repair project on West Monroe from 15th to 16th. That section of Monroe is failing very similar to the section there in front of Loves, between Loves and 15th Street failed here about two years ago. It's a function of ASR as well as poor subgrade drainage. The subgrade out in that area now is starting to pump, so again, we need to pull the surfacing off, we need to get into the subgrade and stabilize the subgrade. So we're getting beyond some maintenance repair and getting into more of a reconstruct-type operation, so that's requiring the revision of the one-year plan as well. Some of the other projects that we have going on to talk about here on this slide that's up right now, we have some mill and overlay going on. This is substantially mill and overlay, North 37th, north of the roundabout up to the city limits. The county did some work there last year, and so we're going to be tying into that, tying in the city limits portion there up to what the county did. On Norfolk Avenue, just kind of working our way east, there are some repairs over around 27th on Norfolk Avenue that we want to get done. Continuing east on Norfolk Avenue, as you get to Norfolk, 7th Street to Norfolk, we want to do some work there from Prospect South to Philip, and then we'll do some additional, some spot patch work on 7th as well, kind of down to Omaha. But full two-inch mill and overlay, full width right there from Prospect South to Madison, excuse me, to Madison. Then on Norfolk Avenue, we'll do a full curb-to-curb mill and overlay through the downtown area from 7th to 1st, and that'll continue. We'll jump over that section that was just rebuilt here now that's concrete from 1st to cottonwood. We'll pick up and mill, do a mill and overlay at cottonwood all the way east and over the drainage or the flood control levee. Part of that project is, we're also, we know that that deck is probably due here in five, six years for some deck repair, if not a full new deck. So built into an engineering agreement that we have with Dick Johnson or Manelli Wagner, would be to bring in some ground penetrating radar system, and we'll do a deck survey using some more modern technology, trying to avoid, well, we won't try to avoid, that will allow us to avoid some of the issues we had on that 1st Street Bridge over the levee. So again, right there, full mill and overlay curb-to-curb from cottonwood over the levee. Continuing on 81, looking there at 81 and Pazwalk, there's some repair we need to do on the outside lanes adjacent to the valley gutters that run through that intersection. And getting down to 81 and 275, there's some repair we need to do north and south of 275, right in that area. More substantial on the southbound lanes, south of Highway 275, but we'll do a little bit of work in all the lanes in that intersection. And then continuing south on 81 down to the Viaduct Bridge, the top of the bridge at the approach panels, there's some repair that needs to be done there. So that's, that's the, those are the revisions that we have in front of you tonight to get on, onto our one and six-year plan formally through a resolution.
You say the one and six-year plan or the one-year plan?
It would be the one-year plan of the one and six-year plan.
There's a Michigan, I don't see anything there, that's been on the one and six-year plan for a lot of time.
Michigan, yeah, Michigan, it's on the one and six-year plan. Actually, it's on our 10-year capital improvement plan. It's just outside of the six-year window, so it doesn't show up in our one and six-year plan. We have advanced that. We did a drainage contract here about a year ago. We'll be revising that contract, doing an amendment to that here in February, or, excuse me, in April, to move that contract into full design for Michigan as well as 8th. Those two need to go together because of the drainage in there. I believe those were pushed out historically as a function of some other work, the Norfolk Avenue project. When I look back at older records, there were just other projects and project costs that pushed that. What we're going to do now, just to advance that project, again, last May, June, council approved some additional funding, left some additional funding in the general revenue account. We're going to be using that to advance, advance that Michigan Avenue and 8th Street work, and then we'll bond the construction cost and use those additional dollars to pay that off, pay off the bond.
So what can we do in the short term to fix those areas that are...
When we bring that mill and overlay operation in, we'll do, we'll do a little mill cap on that, just to hold that until we can get in there. That'll be about a two-year cap. We'll see, I think it's possible we could get that under bid towards, for construction towards, I'm going to say September, October next year. That's about as fast as we can move that, that design. Likewise, there's some work going on at Bel Air on the concrete repair side that just bid, and we'll talk about that here when we get to that, to that contract. But again, we'll do, we'll do a little bit of an overlay there just to hold that in place until we get that reconstructed as well.
I think some of the areas need to be discussed. I mean, like down here by Loves, that 15th Street out there, you get past Loves and that's just trucks, right?
That is just trucks, yes.
And so, I mean, we've got people in the community that are driving their cars on roads that are probably worse than that road with trucks.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I expect us to have to probably close Monroe potentially before we can get that thing rebuilt. It's going to go fast on us. These other streets, I don't see getting to the point where we're going to have to close them, but I do see Monroe getting to that point.
Steve, just for comparison's sake, and to make the point, this one-year plan was modified, given the level of need we see in the community and the priority that the council has designated to new street repair and maintenance. And so, this total of more than $2.3 million in the one-year street plan, how does that compare to past years and what we typically designate for street maintenance?
So typically, we're allocating anywhere from about $550,000 to $750,000. We cut it back to 550,000 last year as a function of COVID, but typically, we're in that, that 750 range. You can see here, we're at 2.3 million between the asphalt work and the concrete work. The concrete work is being, you're looking at our 2021 and 22 concrete repair expense there, the dollars we'd have budgeted across two years. That's the 750 for 2022 and the 550 for 2021. The 1 million, then, that is the reallocation of some, of general fund dollars as a function of, of some of the CARES Act reimbursements that we're getting.
So we'll be designated nearly four times as typical street budget this year for maintenance projects.
Correct.
And I want to note that because, you know, I think that demonstrates the councils and elected officials' recognition that this is a top priority within the community and that we're willing to be creative about designating some new resources as they're available to us to begin to remedy the problem. There's no illusions that this is going to solve all our problems, but it's a good start. It's a, it's a good start. It juices the year-to-year budget that we have, allows us to get to several more additional projects than we had anticipated, and begins a process of helping us somewhat get ahead of the game on, on street repair and not be continually treading water. So I think this was, this was a good plan, a good modification to the plan, and we'll keep designating resources as we can. This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, hearing no one, I will move to close the hearing and advance to item number 27, which is, would be looking for a motion to consider resolution number 2021-8, adopting the revised 2020-2021 One-Year Street Improvement Plan.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration, resolution 2021-8.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion, council? Any further questions for Steve or staff on this?
So Steve, in the concrete street repairs, you have miscellaneous small area. Is that what you're going to use for, you know, the 8th and Michigan area and the 13th and Michigan area? Is that some of your budget that you have to do a little bit of that work?
We will, yeah, we'll look, we'll look at what we need to slip in there. I probably see that as maybe a one-and-a-half inch overlay to, just to kind of hold that together here for a year and a half, two years.
But even though it's not in the written amendments that you have here, it's still on your radar.
It's part of our annual maintenance by contract line item.
Okay, thank you.
So, and Steve, just to clarify, some people might see larger projects that aren't on this list, but that doesn't mean that they're not moving forward in the next year like Benjamin. So this, this operates outside, this is our modified one-year plan, but larger projects like Benjamin continue to move forward for construction next year, correct?
That's correct.
And that project, just in the scheme of things, too, is total project cost anticipated for Benjamin?
We're, we're probably about, I'd say we're about 12.5 plus, some utility relocates on the NPPD side, so we're, we're in that 14, 14 and a half million range for that project.
Yeah, which speaks to the point that these major infrastructure improvement projects are not cheap, and they don't get any cheaper the longer you wait to do them, so, which is another reason why we've tried to accelerate funding to get to more of these projects more quickly. Any other questions or comments?
I got, I got one that's kind of on that same note, but I had notes here that Woodcrest was part of a mill and overlay, and that's not on here, but that's kind of that same following. It's still...
Right, so that's, that's following under our concrete repair by contract line item. Where typically it's 550 to 750, and this year it's 1.3.
I think that's number four on concrete street repairs?
Right.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2021-8 is adopted.
Okay, item 28, would open this public hearing to consider a request from Eric and Natalia Wilson for a waiver of required connection to the community sewage system for property located at 2612 East Benjamin Avenue. And to kick off the public hearing here, Steve Ramis again, please.
Mayor and council, we had a request from Eric and Natalie Wilson for a sidewalk waiver on East Benjamin, 2612 East Benjamin Avenue, as a, as a function of a large lot development that they're, that they're building on out there. It really seemed, as we visited with them about the waiver, that it may, might make sense to do a, a trail extension along Benjamin Avenue to the east in that area. And so that was really a function of the waiver discussion and why they approached us with the waiver. We did have a meeting with the Trail Committee. The Trail Committee agreed that, that made sense from a long-term perspective, that we would want that trail to extend.
Steve, we're talking the sewer connection at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm off on the wrong waiver.
That's the next one.
You can have yourself.
The sewer waiver, so here, we do have sanitary sewer in the right-of-way, it runs up and feeds Woodland Park area there. He falls into that category where the property is within 300 feet of the sewer and the, but the building is more than 450 feet away to his residence. So he falls into an area where he can come in and ask city council for a waiver, and so that's what he's doing here. Long-term, we would not, we don't see putting a sewer in Benjamin Avenue. We would see a future sewer extension probably following that drainage draw that sits to the center of his property and extending that out to the east to serve future development that would occur to the east. So he agrees that in the future, as a function of the waiver, that he would, could potentially be assessed and would not be able to fight the assessment at that time.
Any questions?
Steve, I do have a question. Basically, you're saying that within 300 feet, the property line, which they require, the building itself, though, you actually have 450 feet. Well, where is that building setting the...
I think he's, Val might, could you do a quick measurement there? I think he's in the, oh, closer to 600 feet in that area.
Okay, so clearly you're going to...
Yeah, yeah.
You say there's a sewer line that may go through the center of that or does?
Well, just as we do sewer extensions, we put the sewer in the lowest part, in the lowest location possible. So just looking at that general terrain in there, that sewer would be kind of where Val is showing. That would be the low area through that, through that development or through that parcel of ground. And that's logically where you would put a sewer, just so you can extend it as far to the east as possible with gravity feed. There's no plans to do that, I mean, that is not, that's not in our, our master plan even for sewer, but as it does get extended, you know, it would just go in the lowest location possible to maximize upstream potential, upstream connection potential.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, hearing no one, I will move to close the hearing and move to item number 29 and look for a motion to consider approval of a request from Eric and Natalia Wilson for a waiver of required connection to the community sewage system for property located at 2612 East Benjamin Avenue.
Your Honor, I'll move for consideration of approval.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Takes us to our regular agenda. Item number 30, would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2021-9, approving a sidewalk waiver requested by Eric Wilson for property located at 2612 East Benjamin Avenue.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number 2021-9.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Thank you. Steve started the conversation on this. Because they do have a building permit with us right now, that requires then the sidewalk to be put in, and they are requesting a sidewalk waiver. It did go to before Planning Commission. And I just wanted to point out that a lot of times when sidewalk waivers are given, some of the standard conditions are that because there's no sidewalk next to it, it will go in when an abutting sidewalk goes in. However, this actually does abut the trail system there at Benjamin and 35. So what the Planning Commission came up with was a bit of a compromise. To see in the waiver tonight was the temporary is for two years to give the engineering department time to come up with a good engineering plan to put in actually a 10-foot trail instead of the five-foot sidewalk. And then also that the applicant worked with the city to put in the 10-foot trail and agrees to the assessment for his portion, which would be half of that five feet, because that's what he would normally put in for his sidewalk. And then we do keep the standard one in, that the grading and no landscaping shall be put in the area where the, the trail and the future sidewalk will be put in. That is what the resolution is before you tonight. If you would like something different, we can certainly change those, and you can make an amendment to what the Planning Commission suggested, but that was their compromise. Instead of denying the waiver, which probably what they normally would do if there's, since there's a sidewalk abutting there, this gives them a little bit of time, but they cannot protest the assessment when it comes.
Val, at Planning Commission, was that a unanimous decision on the compromise?
Yes, it was.
Any other questions?
Comment. You know, we have the sidewalk ordinance, we get these waivers. You know, I know it's the original application, it said perpetual, which there'd be no way I'd ever support something like that. That's, but, but I do like that, when I've read into notes, is that the Planning Commission came up with a compromise, and Mr. Wilson's agreeable to it. So, you know, that's, at least we know we have a plan going forward, as long as we enforce such plan at the end of those two years. I mean, that's, I think we have other waivers that are out there that we haven't really readdressed, so, just something we should probably do in the future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I think this one makes sense, rather than having Wilsons put in a sidewalk that we're going to tear out and put in a trail later. It seems kind of ridiculous that we'd even do that, so it's an excellent compromise, and, and obviously, he's, he's okay with that anyway, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't comment on that, too. I think it is a nice compromise to weigh on that, so it's not supposed to be a five-foot tear out, but a 10. And the question I have is, do we have any plans for that 10-foot trail? How far is it going to extend? And do we have that budgeted within our two-year plan so it coincides with his obligation to put it in within two years?
Currently, it's not in our budget, but as we're going through our CIP and city budgets in between now and the end of May, June, this is something that we would certainly look at. It's, it's really, as you're starting to extend to the east there, you know, we are getting outside or beyond city limits in this area, certainly within our jurisdictional area. Taking this to the city Trail Committee, they talked that at least it would go to the quarter-quarter, quarter-quarter line there to the, to the east side of these large lots, and then potentially the conversation would be to take that back north from that point until, again, the community started to develop out into that area and East Benjamin continued to develop. But the short, the short, so that was the short term, probably get it to that quarter-quarter line and then run it north, or even out to the, to the section line there, that next.
To that section line?
Go, go one more, Val, yeah, to there. I think right now, in terms of the budget that we would look at, we would look at probably a budget line item for the next couple of years, two, three years. We'd probably, just to get it to where the, end of those large lots are developed, yeah, right there.
I think it brings up a question for me now, that Frank brought that up, but, so you have a two-year timeframe for the Wilsons to put in a sidewalk, which may not have a trail in there in two years, so it wouldn't be compliant if we leave that in? Is that something that we should just have the one note of applicant must work with the city of a 10-foot trail and agrees for the assessments and leave off the two-year commitment? It's going to happen when the trail goes in, not necessarily within two years.
I kind of tend to agree with you, because our trail budget is typically a big-time placeholder.
Right.
You know, and, and that stuff gets moved around with what comes up with necessity. So very easily, that could be put in there and all of a sudden moved or kicked down, you know, extended the period of time it was going to go in, so you're...
I mean, yeah, we heard it right here, it might not be two years, could be three, who knows?
I think it's good to have a timeframe on it, both for us and for the, for the landowners out there as, as they develop that, because certainly the next pieces, you know, as, as the next lots go, they're going to be asking the same questions. You know, I would think pretty confidently, within two years, we could have a concept forward in terms of how we would do that. You know, Councilman Weeblehouse made the... You know, the, the Councilman Weeble House made the comment there about calling in sidewalks. We will be presenting a plan to council to call in, start calling in sidewalks, most likely in May. We'll be presenting that, and that would be a perpetual program where, moving forward, we're calling in sidewalks on an annual basis and then subsequently putting out sidewalk districts to get those constructed, should the landowner choose not to. I see this as something that is part of this citywide call-in, as we're calling those in and preparing those, that we would call this in or any other, any other sidewalks that, you know, are sitting out there on expired waivers. So, I, I do think that, you know, we will be presenting that plan and I, I'd be comfortable with a two-to-three-year time, time period on a waiver.
Just, somebody can answer the question for me. If the waiver's granted with those stipulations that has been brought forth on the agenda, does that wait, does that stay with the property? If all of a sudden, per seens circumstances, Mr. Wilson sells his property that he's building his house on, would that stay with the property?
I'd have to ask Val, does that stay with the property or do the new owners have to request a waiver?
I don't know that. It says it's a personal privilege, it's by the, it'll be filed against the legal description at the county. Because it looks like by GIS, two of them have already sold this one and this one. So, as soon as building permits come in on these next two, I'm guessing they'll be coming in and asking for the exact same waiver. So, whatever we do tonight would probably be what you'd want to do to the next ones also.
Yeah, just one other thing I see on the map, there's like a, like a little flagpole on the far east of his property. Maybe he is aware that he could get assessed for that once it gets further down.
Yeah, that was put in with the plat, for a plan for a road to actually go north and south there.
All right, thank you.
All right, I got another question then. So, what if it goes past the two years and this is in this document?
So, in the waiver, it says the temporary waiver is in effect for two years. Any modification or extension of waiver shall be, have to be approved by the mayor and council after recommendation by the commission. So, would go back through the process and you would extend it?
Meaning, Mr. Wilson would have to bring it back forward to us?
Yes.
But we said in our own words that it could take two to three years, so why don't we put it out further so that isn't a necessity? Does that make sense?
Yeah. You can make.
I mean, I, I look at the map, guys, and we got, I don't know how many feet that is, but along Highway 35, that's not, we're not just talking, well, heck, we're talking over half a mile for sure.
On Benjamin?
No, I think it's just the north side of the lot, Corey, because there's already a trail there along his west side. He wouldn't have to put one in there. Well.
I, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable either way.
I can go to anywhere.
I, so, I could certainly support three years, you know, amending that to three years. I think like Val said, we are, and that was kind of part of the discussion there, was that those, those next lots are either sold or getting ready to sell and would be probably under a permit to build here in the next six to six months, nine months.
What was the Planning Commission rationale for putting the two-year time limit on as opposed to three?
Just, I think it was really just around us getting a sidewalk district in place to do that. So, really a determination on, is that going to be its own sidewalk district? Can we just kind of wait for these next developers to get in here, but go ahead and, and get the sidewalk district in place? And as soon as they're onboard, we're ready to pull the trigger? Or is it going to be part of a larger call-in? You know, more of a citywide-type call-in of specific locations?
Are we able to amend this to three years, right here?
Amend anything you want, yeah.
That's my suggestion, then, we amend that to three years.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second on an amendment to extend to three years. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, takes us back to the underlying resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2021-9 is adopted as amended.
Moves us to item 31, we'd look for a motion to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation Incorporated and the City of Norfolk, wherein the foundation has received a grant from the foundation that desires to remain anonymous to be used in the Johnson Park revitalization project. The Greater Norfolk Economic Development Foundation desires to contribute $500,000 in grant funds to the city for the project and assign and transfer certain obligations of the grant agreement between the foundation and anonymous donor to the city.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion second. And for some background on this, Andy Colvin, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, as you just put, Mayor, in reading this agenda item, the foundation's essentially a pass-through for a grant from an anonymous Nebraska foundation specifically for the Johnson's Park revitalization project. So, as part of that, the city did need to comply with a number of terms and conditions as part of that. And we've reviewed that with our legal team and we've, these are all items that we can comply with and we feel we can do very well. There is one representative in there that needs to be designated, and I'll just note for the record that that would be Steve Ramus. Would serve as that role to keep everybody updated on the status of the project, since he would be overseeing majority of that construction from the city's standpoint.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions?
Andy, on the obligations, is there financial obligations on the city beyond the $500,000 for administrative or things like that?
I think there are, obviously, there could be a cost to some of those things that we'll have to do in, in preparation, but I don't think it's anything outside of something reasonable that we would help with. I mean, it's a, it's a wonderful donation to have for an important project for the city, so certainly, those are things we can easily do, I feel.
Thank you.
Yeah, just comment, it's a, it's a terrific contribution to receive for purposes of rejuvenated Johnson Park to what it once was a regional attraction park as a WPA project back in the late 1930s, early 1940s. And as we all know, we've taken quite a bit of focus to put on partnerships to accomplish revitalization of both the Norfolk and Johnson Park partnerships through entities like the NRD, the SID, State of Nebraska grants. And now, we're starting to see private sector donations to this project, which will help us get it done and get it across the finish line. So, we are appreciative of that fact. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item 32, we'd look for a motion to consider approval of an amendment to the agreement for engineering services contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for the levy certification Phase 2B project for an amount not to exceed $240,000, seven, $247, $749, $240,749. And to, oh, thank you. Motion and second. For background on this, Steve Ramus, please.
Mayor and Council, we've been working now for the last two, three years on prepping our levy for recertification. We had selected HDR Engineering to do the recertification for us. They've been working on that now, and we're just, this, with this amendment, we'll interface 2B, which is the alternatives analysis. I've asked a representative from HDR, that's probably project lead for us, to give us maybe about a five-minute update on the project just based on the significance of this to the city of Norfolk. Vicki, I want you to go ahead and come forward. This is Vicki. She's with, she's our project, lead project manager for HDR and the project. So, Vicki, I'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. Good evening, council members and mayor. Wanted to give you an update on the levy certification program project. On the next slide, you'll see just a slide showing what the effective flood insurance rate map from FEMA shows. This currently shows the levy is providing accreditation. FEMA has accredited the levy, showing that it is certified and provides very little flood hazard boundary areas on the landlord's side of the levy system. From a recertification standpoint that FEMA is requesting, they're requesting the information to prove that we can either continue to show the map in this manner or revise it to show any revisions that may be necessary. So, on the next slide, we've provided a summary of the phases up through 2B. And we'll get into the remaining phases in subsequent slides. You'll see in Phase 1 and Phase 2A, those have been completed. Phase 1 was a desktop assessment, determining what data was available and what additional data needed to be collected. That the Phase 2A project was collecting the additional data needed to determine the existing condition of the levy and how it meets FEMA requirements. Phase 2B is an alternatives analysis for those components that were deemed to need improvement in order to meet FEMA requirements. On the next slide, you'll see the, the three remaining phases, once we get through alternatives analysis. Phase 3 would be the design permitting and authorization request and bid phase services associated with those improvements that are identified as part of the alternatives analysis. Phase 4 would be construction, and Phase 5 will be the collection of the certification data, preparation of the package, and submit it to FEMA. As you can see, the Phase 2B, we will get started here this spring. That will take no less than six months, sorry, no more than six months to complete. We'll enter into an agreement this fall to enter into design services. Construction would start in 2022 and go into 2023. And then 2023, in that fall, we would, we would submit the certification package. On the next slide, what I've done is gone through some of those FEMA certification requirements. You'll see a graphic on the right-hand side of the slide that provides all the information that FEMA requires in order to provide or credit the levy system as providing flood risk reduction. In Phase 2, we determined that those elements that passed were freeboard, embankment protection, which is the surface of the riverward side of the levy, the riverward slope, and settlement. Alternatives we'll be looking at include closures, embankment foundation stability analysis, and interior drainage. On the next slide, we have the information on program costs to date. In Phase 1, our contract was for just under $60,000, and we spent $46,000. So, we left $13,500 that did not get billed. In Phase 2A, the contract was for $543,116, and we have billed $441,177, resulting in a savings of just over $100,000. So, and to date, we've got a savings of about $113,500. Phase 2B, the contract is $240,749. The results of the alternatives analysis will have a heavy impact on what an anticipated fee will be for Phase 3. That's why I have the range here, because right now, without the benefit of having the alternatives analysis, I can't pinpoint what those final alternatives will be. We're looking at a fee of anywhere from $400,000 to $1 million, depending on what gets identified. Phase 3 also includes other items not specifically related to FEMA recertification. As part of the 2019 flood event, there was a lot of siltation that was dropped along the bench of the levy system. And that bench is from the riverward toe of the levy out to the top of the low-flow channel. The Corps did not regrade that entire section the way that the city initially thought they would. So, that section needs to be regraded in order to get drainage away from the levy into the low-flow channel. In addition, FEMA was originally going to cover the cost through public assistance of the outfall channels for five outfall locations along the levy system that the Corps did not cover. FEMA eventually just determined that because they are under a program that the Corps oversees, FEMA can't cover the cost of those. So, that work would also be included in the Phase 3 project. So, those would be design fees in addition to any certification items that we determine as part of our alternatives assessment. On the next slide, we go through Phase 4 and Phase 5. The, the fee for Phase 4 will depend on whether we're just providing design milestone visits during construction or if we're providing full representative project representation or RPR services during construction. That would get worked out with the city at that time. Phase 5 would be the preparation of the certification documentation, the completion of FEMA forms, and response to any FEMA comments.
Got a question for you?
Yes.
So, the Corps of Engineers botched the job? Is that right? And FEMA, FEMA can't step in and fix it?
I'll, I'll answer that.
Oh, don't let her off the hook, Steve.
So, the repairs that, the repairs that FEMA authorized and the repairs that the Corps did, and those are two different things. We'll talk about the Corps repairs. The Corps came in as a function of a request for repair that we filed with them, probably within four weeks after the flood event. They come in, they look at the levy, and they determine what was damaged as a function of that flood that was still in the original O&M condition. And then they repair that. And so, they did, they repaired, they repaired our trail system. They repaired the scour that occurred underneath the bridges. They did come in and do additional repair to the diversion structure up there. Maybe they just decided that whatever was damaged there, must have been damaged as a function of the flood. So, they did that. They didn't, they didn't botch anything that they were working on. They did an excellent job on the repairs that they did. The stuff that FEMA then came in and did, FEMA came in and did flood repairs beyond what the Corps did, but yet again, were related to flood damage. So, if there was stuff in the levy, it was already outside of the original operations manual that we have. So, we maintain the levy based on an operations manual. The Corps came in and repaired anything that before the flood met the original conditions of the operations manual. FEMA came in and repaired things that did not meet the original O&M manual, but were damaged during the flood, primarily silt. They did some debris removal, the silt repair. We pushed them pretty hard on repairing those outfalls. There's five outfalls in there. But every year, they come and, and review the levy, review the condition of the levy, and they write us up a, a large report. It was pretty obvious that those five outfall structures post-construction were damaged. And so, looking at, looking at those, the photos and stuff from previous year's inspections, it was pretty obvious that the flood really didn't do too much more damage to those. They functioned well. There were some silt inside those. We cleaned out the silt, got them functional. They, they reimbursed us for those costs. So, now, you know, that's the Corps. The Corps did their work, they did a great job. FEMA came in here and for the work that FEMA needed to do in the levy, which was fairly minimal, just kind of more reimbursing us for some of our costs in there, that work was done. What we want to do going forward with the recertification is look at some of those items that over the last 50 years have fallen out of the original O&M condition so that, once those are repaired, heaven forbid, in 10 years, we have another flood event and those are damaged or there is additional silt buildup, all of that would be covered by the Corps going forward.
Any other questions?
Steve, just to kind of refresh, the reason we have to do this, we're more or less mandated, correct, by the federal?
If we want the advantage of the FEMA flood map protection within the city, the levy has to be certified.
Thank you.
And Steve, can you speak to, is FEMA or Corps match on the cost of requirements for levy recertification? It's, it's on us.
That would be 100% our cost. That would be 100% our cost.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you for joining us. Any other discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 33 would look for a motion to consider resolution number 2021-10 calling $2,270,000 of outstanding Series 2016 general obligation recreational facilities refunding bonds.
Your honor, I'd move for consideration of resolution 2020-10. Not 2021-10, thank you.
Motion in a second. And to give us some background on this, please, Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yes, your honor, this is calling the oldest of the RECT facilities bonds that we have outstanding. Those have a 2% interest rate on them. And they're now callable and we've got a bunch of the occupation tax money that would have been collected that is set in our bank account earning closer to a quarter of a percent. So this is calling those bonds to realize that, uh, basically get rid of the negative arbitrage we have on the money that we've collected. After we call these bonds, we'll have $2,030,000 outstanding. So we're getting close to the end of this. We're collecting about $2 million of occupation tax a year that goes towards paying debt service on these. So we're getting right down towards the end of it after we do this.
And Randy, that would be an earlier payoff than originally anticipated, is that correct?
Yes, we originally thought we'd have these bonds outstanding for 20 years. And they're actually going to be outstanding for, um, something closer to half of that almost. We issued those in 2010, I believe. So we end up calling them, I think, paying the final bonds off towards the end of this year. So we're gonna end up paying them quicker than we originally anticipated. It was hard figuring out what we were going to get for revenue from those occupation taxes. We issued the bonds, we wanted to be on the conservative side and, and, uh, that'll be good.
That's always good news, paying off earlier than expected. Any other questions or discussion on this, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution 2021-10 is adopted.
Item 34 would entertain a motion to consider approval of an engineering construction design services contract with Olson Incorporated for the water pollution control plant improvements 2021 project for an amount not to exceed $497,000.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second. And some background on this, please, Steve Ramis.
Mayor and council, I'm going to bring up Rob Huntley from our wastewater pollution control facility to walk you through these, uh, this contract amendment.
Mayor and council, Rob Huntley, wastewater superintendent. Water pollution control is asking for approval of $497,000 for engineering by Olsons for five projects that are part of our 20-year master plan. Uh, the five projects are, uh, the first one is construction of new grit removal system. This is where we remove the grit from our system. This is kind of bottlenecking the plant. Uh, this would double, more than double our capacity through the plant. Right now, we're doing about 4.2 million gallons a day. This would increase it to 10.89 million gallons per day. Uh, the second project would be construction of our overland waste receiving. Uh, this is where we receive our mud pits, septes, uh, kind of all kinds of fun stuff there. Uh, this would actually put it in before pumps in our headworks, uh, go right into the grit system, saving us on our pumping and, uh, capacity there as well. The third item is rehab of the north lift station. This is, uh, five pumps, uh, it's part of the legacy part of the plant. It's, uh, just kind of upgrading the system by looking at piping and, uh, and pump replacement there as well. The fourth item is rehab of our primary clarifier number two. Uh, this was also kind of decided to do during this time as we would need a crane and some things in there. It'd be a cost savings by doing this at this time. Uh, and number five is construction of a flood wall around the plant and an effluent pumping system to the river during a flooding event. This has actually been applied, a grant has been applied with NEMA slash FEMA. And we would like to have plans on the shelf so we're kind of ready to go. We did not make the first round, but looking to hopefully make the second round on that project, so. Um, projected flows, uh, 2040, uh, if lighting industry in the town continues to grow, our, uh, million gallon days would be about 8.4 on average. Right now, we're running about 2.8 to 3 million gallons a day. So, uh, this would definitely, these projects are in that five-year scope of that 20-year master plan. So if I have any questions about the plans or, you know, we're a little bit fast. I know sometimes my terminology of wastewater is not in everybody's wheelhouse, but, uh...
Can you just define fun stuff for us?
Fun stuff?
Maybe we don't want, we probably don't want to know, we probably don't want to. Um, so as you said, this is part of a, these are improvements that were anticipated and projected as part of a long-term planning process and budgeted for then through the, uh, utility fees and, and things like that, right? Okay.
And Rob, it's been 25, 30 years since there's been a major upgrade.
Yeah, there, it's been a major upgrade, it's been quite a while. So we're looking at, like I say, some of this grit, uh, collection system, you know, it's been added on, it's legacy part of the plant. Uh, new, new technology out there, better separation. Uh, keeping that grit from getting into the plant saves us a lot of money. Right now, some of the grit's getting through and it's costing us some, some extra pains that we don't want to have.
All right, thank you.
Are there questions for Rob? Thank you, sir.
You go.
Any further discussion, council?
I do have a question here, Steve. Does, does that 497, does that include the estimation or the, uh, the design of that berm?
Yeah, so the question there from council, councilman Burns was, does, does that 497 include the design of the berm? It does. Um, I don't recall the exact number on that, but I'm, I'm thinking the design of the berm was around 50,000. A fairly small cost to have that designed done so that we know what that, how wide it is, slopes, how high it needs to be. A while here, about a year, year and a half ago, we were going to extend as we pave, um, what is that? I guess that would be chestnut down there. We're going to be paving chestnut as a function of our transfer station improvements. We decided to stop that just south of the transfer station and not, not go south. You know, and if we had something like that already designed, we would know how big to build that berm and, and we could do that extension. But, um, again, as a function of the transfer station, as we're do, as we're grading that site, had we had that design in hand already, we could build that berm between the transfer station and the, and the plant at this time. But those are the things, it's just nice to have that, you know, it's a fairly small cost, huge benefit to, to our operation out there. I like to remind people that as a function of the 2019 flood, uh, we, you know, water was about six inches from going in the door at the plant and had that occurred, we would have had to shut down the plant, protect as much of that infrastructure and electrical infrastructure as we could. The other issue we have during high waters is just being able to pump our free flow, the effluent from the plant into the river. And there's some product, some of the design here will be building in some systems that allow us to sort of, um, pump, uh, pump that water out during high water flows. We'll have a tank here that we can fill up and create the pressure we need to get that out, so. As Rob mentioned, we did put in, we have applied for, uh, for a grant that would bring about 2.4 million to the table as a function of constructing that flood wall. We're anxious to see how that goes. If that doesn't, if that doesn't come, uh, we'll pursue other, other grant funding as a function of that.
Okay, makes sense. Any other questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 25, 35, sorry. Would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5726, authorizing issuance of special assessment bond anticipation notes in the principal amount not to exceed $2,400,000 for paving District 519, sewer District 254, and water districts 124 and 126.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5726.
Motion in second. And for some background again on this, please, Randy Gates.
Yes, your honor. Uh, these four districts, three are legacy bound. Paving District 519, water District 126 and sewer 254 are in legacy bound. In addition to this, it's getting interim financing for the South Highway 81 water extension district, and that's water District 124. Total cost of those districts is expected to be $2,035,000. This is a three-year note, one-year call. And we need to add metrics that's going to be accruing during the time before we give permanent financing on this along with issuance cost. Adding those to the $2,365,000 of project cost gives an expected issue of $2,325,000.
Okay, thank you. Randy, any questions? So again, assessment districts to accommodate, uh, further, uh, growth, housing partly in this and, um, industrial and commercial corridor. So, any comments or questions? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bond anticipation notes of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska in the principal amount of not to exceed $2,400,000 for the purpose of providing interim financing to pay the cost of street improvements in paving District number 519, sewer improvements in sewer District Extension District number 254, and water improvements and water extension districts numbers 124 and 126, pending the issuance of permanent general obligation various purpose bonds of the city, prescribing the form of said notes, agreeing to issue the city's general obligation various purpose bonds to pay the notes at maturity or to pay the notes from other available funds, authorizing officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale of the notes and to designate the final terms, rates and maturity schedule for said notes within stated parameters, authorizing officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale of the notes and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5726 carries on first reading.
And I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5726 on second and third.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number 5726 carries on second and third.
Item 36 would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to TRAFCON Incorporated of Lincoln, Nebraska for the pavement markings 2021-1 project for an amount of $236,388.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in second. And Steve Ramis, some background on this, please.
Mayor and council, this is primarily a pedestrian safety enhancement project for us. Uh, it'll be putting stop, stop bars and painted crosswalks at 13 intersections throughout the community. About half of those are on 275 and Highway 81. The others are on First Street and, uh, and Riverside. Uh, the estimate, the engineer's estimate on the, on the project was, uh, $240,000, so it came in pretty close, a little bit under our estimate. Certainly, we did bid it two ways. We bid it thermoplastic and we bid it, um, polyurea. Both of those are, are a long-term pavement marking. Um, the low bid or the bidder was the polyurea, which is typically what we see around here. We don't see too much thermoplastic in our specific town. Again, it's a product that'll last, uh, I'd say four or five years versus the paint that we put down and we might get, you know, about a half a year out of it. So it's a, should, should be a nice pedestrian safety project for us.
Steve, I'm sorry, this, the winning bid was the thermoplastic product, is that right?
Uh, the winning bid was polyurea. So the line items in the bid document were set up as thermoplastic, but they had the option to bid polyurea. The way that is, the way that industry works, we really have one thermoplastic contractor in the state. We have one polyurea bidder in the state. They cover a lot of ground. We would expect the contract probably to start around July 1st. It's probably about two weeks, two weeks in town.
And you said that's a total of 13 intersections?
13 intersections. Uh, you can see it's about right in that 20 grand range per intersection.
$10,000 in the intersection?
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I got one, I think, um, because I think some of this goes across Omaha Avenue 275, am I correct? Like Buffalo Wild Wings, for instance. How does that traffic affect, let's say, compared to paint and having that product down? I mean, is there, is high traffic going to wear that down faster than what it normally would? Where it'd be beneficial just putting paint down every six months?
I, I, I think from a cost analysis perspective, you know, putting paint down every six months is a, is a hot, it's a, it's a high labor factor, labor cost for us, the paint itself, although paint is increasing. And we were paying about 50% more this year compared to last year for our paint. We just did the order. It, it's, when you pull staff away from one thing to do that, your staff cost is actually twice because you're not getting something done somewhere else. I think, you know, compared to painting every two years, if you can get this stuff to last four to five years, you know, that's eight to 10 paintings, um, in high traffic areas. So there's, there's more cost to us. Our, our, our traffic control, our, our street shop just really isn't set up to get out into that high traffic area on 275 and 81. It does wear faster in high traffic areas, but the polyurea and thermoplastic are designed to last in that four to five-year category in high traffic areas. More than anything, what, what takes away time is snow plow activity, just depending on how that's, how that product's ground in and if that grinding is, is done appropriately so that that, that paint or thermoplastic lags down in that, in that, uh, ground out area. The other thing that can really wear on it is your turn movement. So if you've got heavy truck traffic doing turn movements, that's going to be a wear area. But, you know, just in general traffic conditions, um, I would say you see, if you go into Omaha, Lincoln downtowns, you're going to see a, a heavy product like this. You want to put something in that's going to last, something, you know, try and keep your crews out of those, out of those middle of the street as much as you can. I don't know if I answered your question there, councilman. I could certainly put together an analysis so you could see those numbers.
I'd say I'm just concerned that it, we're going to put it across there and it's not going to last very long and it's pretty costly.
Yeah.
And we really don't have a guarantee, I'm guessing, that it's going to last four years. If it lasts two years, we're back at doing...
We don't get a guarantee, yeah. We don't get a guarantee that it's going to last two to four. They, again, they can't guarantee the traffic conditions, but we do have a way to guarantee that it's put in correctly, you know? Again, they can't guarantee the traffic conditions, but we do have a way to guarantee that it's put in correctly, you know. What we see on Brosch Avenue obviously was not put in correctly. If it's not, you're going to see that within that first year, if there's an issue with installation. I would be pretty comfortable to say, yeah, we do have a one-year warranty on installation on that, so we can always call them back. So as long as, if you can get through us, if you can get it down in the middle of summer versus October, November, December, and you can get through that winter, if you haven't seen any wear and tear during that first winter, you know, it's going to last as long as the product should last.
I'll just go one more follow-up, I guess, on that same topic. Do we have this down in any other type of high-traffic area that proves that it works, I guess?
Polyceria is on Norfolk Avenue, and we put that down in spring of seventeen, as we were finishing up Norfolk. Was it spring of seventeen? No. Spring of eighteen, we put that down. I think in general, that still looks, looks pretty good over there. Yeah, that Norfolk Avenue from First to the, over the bridge, we did. And there's some, and there's some high traffic there.
A question I had on that as well, with the road change to the one-year improvement. We've designated about eleven different locations. Any of these thirteen overlapping, so obviously are going to...
Yeah, we would...
...repair before.
Correct.
These are...
Correct.
I think the, I wish we could do double this, because I think our streets are lacking in cross markings. I wish we could do more, but it's a good start.
I want to make sure we're getting the right product down. There are, even as you talk about paint, there are, there are a lot of different paint products out there. Every state DOT does extensive testing on paint product. Typically, what they have is a state spec, is something that's going to last on an annual basis. It's not going to last too much longer than that unless they're putting down thermoplastic or polyceria. I do think looking at the paint product itself that we're putting down and making sure that we're not putting down something that shouldn't be lasting as long as it should is something we definitely need to look at. In general, I would say, just from watching our paint operations, pretty typical for municipal paint.
Any further questions?
Steve, this just isn't spraying down. They have to grind some pavement out and apply it in the...
They grind it, yeah. They grind it down about an eighth of an inch.
Does this have reflective material in it as well?
Yeah, yes, it has to.
Okay.
That's a, that's a federal requirement. It's a glass bead, it's a glass bead product that gets shot down into the paint after the paint goes down.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-seven would entertain a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Elkhorn Paving Construction Company Incorporated of Norfolk, Nebraska for the concrete improvements 2021-1 project for an amount of $1,299,232.12.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Motion second, and once again, Steve, some background to kick off this discussion, please.
Mayor and Council, this is our concrete street repair improvement by contract item. It's the item that's on our CIP, or our one and six-year plan. Typically, we do about $550,000 to $750,000 a year on that item. You can see here, we have 1.3 million that we're going to be contracting out for. There is a map in the agenda packet that maps the areas around the community that we'll be doing improvements on. I'll kind of read, I'll read through those here. Hillview Drive, College View to Sheridan Drive, Eighteenth Street, in the Bel Air to Imperial, Taylor Avenue, Twenty-Fifth to Market Lane, Woodcrest from East Maple to Sycamore, Monroe Avenue between Fifteenth and Sixteenth, and then there's some other areas, just smaller repair areas that we'll tackle in that contract as well. All in all, 1.3 million. Again, that is our 2021 and 2022 concrete improvements. What we understand right now, there was one bidder, a local bidder on the project. My estimate, John and I, our estimate was $1,330,000. So again, they came in underestimated, but for all practical purposes, they came in right at estimate. Visiting with the contractor, we're not exactly sure how much of this we're going to get done this year compared to next year. We are working with them and will continue to work with them to put a plan in place in terms of which one we're going to do first. Bel Air is a high priority for us, if we can get in and get it done before school starts. If we can't get Eighteenth up there around that Bel Air area, if we can't do that this year before school starts, then we will put an asphalt cap on that, just to hold that until next year. I would guess an inch, inch and a half asphalt cap on that. Any questions?
If we do that asphalt cap, will there be an excessive charge to tear that out next year?
I wouldn't think so. We're going to, we'll capture that. All that material will go back into our concrete pile and get crushed, so there wouldn't be a need to separate that from the concrete. That could just go into our crush pile and get crushed with that.
I guess my other question is if we have an increase in product, such as concrete goes up, is that covered in this bid, or is that...
With this bid, we're locked in at bid price.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, this is where I obviously got a little bit mixed up on projects, but the Woodcrest project's on here as concrete repairs. And earlier, we talked about possible mill and overlay for this. Do you know exactly what's going to happen on that?
Right now, we did have some conversation about best approach there, you know, concrete repair, minimal concrete repair, and then come in and do an asphalt overlay, or just concrete repair. Right now, this is, it's set up to be concrete repair. I think once this is done, we'll look at the rideability of it, and then if we need to bring in a plane as part of some, an overall community project, where we look at doing some planning to improve rideability on our streets. That's something that we want to look at. When you're doing a lot of panel repairs in a, in a block or something like that, that rideability just becomes more of an issue for you. That's one thing, you know, when we do these big mill and overlays like we did here back in 2018, we did Benjamin, East Benjamin Avenue, we did First Street, we did some work on Norfolk Avenue. You mill, it's a very coarse milling operation, and then we come in and put an asphalt overlay on that, which really gives us the rideability we're looking for on our materials. Less of a concern on residential, but I think it's something that I'd like to look at and just kind of see which is, which is the better product from a neighborhood perspective.
So, one last question on that with, with what we talked about there. Is the, is the change, there's a lot of repairs to do on that street...
There are.
On Woodcrest, so is maybe this recommendation from engineering side, or is it from the contractor who's going to do the work? Or how did that, how's this come about?
Engineering. We did a cost analysis on both, and to do minimal repairs in the mill and overlay was running a little bit less than just a full, you know, I'm not going to say full concrete repair because we're not doing curb-to-curb concrete repair the whole way in there.
Right.
There's enough in there to salvage. It came in a little bit higher than, than the mill and, than the repair mill and overlay. But I think there was a lot of delamination on the curb and gutter, and so we're wanting to get as much of that repaired. Doing the minor repair and mill and overlay wasn't going to get all the curb and gutter that's falling apart. So we just kind of thought from a community look or neighborhood look, the concrete was going to be the better of the two.
I agree. Exactly the way you stated it. It is a lot of curve. It's, yeah, concrete's probably the way to go.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-eight would consider, entertain a motion to consider approval of an engineering services contract with Minelli Wagner &amp; Associates Incorporated for the asphalt overlays 2021 project for an amount of $56,385.
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion second, and once again, Steve, background on this.
Mayor and Council, for the last three months or so, we've been working with, with the county as a function of a major, major mill and overlay project that they had awarded in January. We'd actually started working with the county as early as October on our mill and overlay projects for the year. We thought that based on the prices that came in, being very favorable, the route forward was going to be to do a memorandum of agreement with the county and then change order our mill and overlays onto theirs. As we kind of got closer to the end point and started to have, I started to have more conversation with the county just about getting this all structured and out the door. The contractor was, was starting to negotiate almost every bid item. You know, we weren't just going to be able to capture bid items off of their project and plug them in and do a change order. Everything was going to be, need to be negotiated. So based on that, we decided if that's the case, it's going to be better just to go out and bid it. And then, since we're going to go out and bid it, rather than do an MOU with the county, we would just go ahead and pay Minelli Wagner for the work that they've done to get those projects in place and the plans out the door. So this contract here for $56,385 pays Minelli Wagner for the plans and the bid documents for the asphalt mill and overlay project. As part of that $56,000, there's an $8,000 line item in that contract. It's best estimate based on visiting with the vendor, but that $8,000 is for the ground penetrating radar deck delamination survey. We thought that was pretty good risk avoidance, again, knowing we had $170,000 change order on the First Street one. Spending, spending a little bit more upfront, figuring out exactly what's there would be the way to go. So, again, that $8,000 is included in the $56,385. In addition, there was about $2,120 of effort spent by Minelli Wagner on other mill and overlay potentials that ultimately did not get into this project, but will go into a future project. And so we're, we're paying them for some of that planning and effort that went into those as well.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions?
Based on about a $1 million construction, you're looking at about a 5% design fee, so pretty good.
It's pretty good. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-nine would entertain a motion to consider council approval of the plan specifications and engineer's estimate on file in the city offices for asphalt overlays 2021 project and authorization for the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Second.
Motion second. Steve, anything to add to this?
I don't, I think I've talked pretty much about it.
Okay.
If you have questions, I'll answer them.
Any comments, questions, discussion, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, and before we move on to our final item, the administrative report, we're going to do the Arbor Day proclamation. And I will read the proclamation and then ask the group, the Children of the Trees, to come forward to receive it. Proclamation reads, "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Josh Moating, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day. And the City of Norfolk can urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect trees and woodlands, planting and caring for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations in participating in a tree planting opportunity on their property or in their neighborhood." So I'll now ask the youth philanthropy group, Children of the Trees, to come forward to receive the proclamation. For background, this group has been working for a couple of years now to increase tree plantings in the city of Norfolk, and within the last year specifically helped the city to accomplish its goal of planting 2,020 trees in the year 2020. And we very much appreciate their participation and their involvement and engagement in the community. So, why don't you guys all, while I come bring the proclamation, why don't you all introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you did the last year? Can you do that?
My name's Zofina, and my last name's Carlson, and what I did love to do is just chill.
My name is Kayne Carlson, and last year I planted trees with my family.
Hi, I'm Serena Carlson. Last year, my family and I planted trees at our farm.
Hello, my name is Kira Carlson, and we planted trees.
As simple as that. Well, thank you very much. Hey, you didn't mention the video that you did to promote tree planting, right? Well, we could show it here, but I don't think we have time. But these guys are budding actors and actresses, and did a very nice job helping the city promote our 2020 and 2020 campaign. And we got it done. We planted more than that. I think we ended up going a hundred or 200 trees beyond our goal, and that's thanks to all the work you guys did. So, this is a proclamation, and Your Honor, celebrating Arbor Day this year. And so, congratulations, and thank you very much. Let's get a picture together, okay? Here, can you walk it like that? Like that. Everybody get in a picture? All right, thank you very much.
Okay, last but not least, an administrative report, consideration of the approval of the library's annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time this evening. That's a hard act to follow. Every year, the library reports on our finances, our collections, our programs, and our services to the State Library Commission, which is the Nebraska Library Commission. And so that's the annual report that you see in front of you. I also included a little more colorful version that includes some comparisons to where we were with our last fiscal year. And of course, all of our usage and everything was down this last year. You know, the pandemic, of course, hit the library usage pretty hard. But one thing I would like to point out, if you see, our library visits for last year was down 43%, which is a lot. But our collection use was only down 26%. And I think that goes to show how hard the library staff worked to still give people access to materials, whether it was eBooks and showing people how to use them, or using our locker system or our drive-up window, you know, just doing our very best to get people the information and reading material that they needed. So, looking forward to this coming year, we've already started baby-stepping back into some library programs. We started Storytime last week in the library. We started Storytime last week in the library. So we're really excited to get back to a some semblance of normal and, and just kind of slowly work our way back to getting back to the status quo. So, I'll keep it brief, but be happy to answer any questions anyone had.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm a frequent visitor to the library here. I'm not a big fan of electronic books, but I've been to many other libraries in first-class cities, and I just want to say that I think Norfolk has got the shining jewel of libraries. So if you haven't had an opportunity to go, please go because Jessica and her staff are extremely helpful in anything that you want to do there. Most great meeting locations. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you so much.
Well said, Councilman. I think that we can all be proud of both the investment that the citizens voted to approve in expanding and renovating the library and the care and maintenance of that facility that our, that Jessica provides leadership for and the staff oversees. I, I think we do have one of the best, if not the best, library in the state. And I know it was a tough year for everybody, but you guys very creatively helped continue to provide services that were needed during challenging times and are still doing it. So I appreciate events like the COVID vaccination registration events that are, that have been hosted at the library and your participation in those types of events to better the community. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
And with that, we don't have to take any formal motion on that, do we, Brianna?
We typically don't. We don't know.
Okay, okay, all right. I think that means the report has been approved formally. And with that, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. Good evening.